Come back into open session. Our first item for open session is Historic Preservation Commission interviews. And see, Michael McSimms has joined us. Mackenzie, do we have our folks available for their interviews?
I'm gonna call the first gentleman now.
Okay.
Hi, is this Steve?
Yes, it is.
Hi, Steve, this is Mackenzie. I have the commissioners on the line with me to start your interview.
Okay.
Excellent. Thanks, Mackenzie. Steve, this is Kevin Schutte, also on with Commissioners Netherland and Trask. Can you hear us okay?
It sounds like you're way in the background.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It sounds like you are way in the background. I can't hear you.
Okay. We will, we'll do our best to speak up and try to be as, as clear as possible, Steve. Before we get started, there's, there's a few questions that we ask. They are done in a round robin sort of style. So each commissioner will take turns asking you questions. No right or wrong answers to any of these questions. Just give us your, your thoughts on them and then we'll move forward. Okay?
Okay.
First question, and then I'll, I'll do the first question, then we'll go to Commissioner Netherland and then Commissioner Trask. The first question is, Steve, what do you see as the function of the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission?
Oh, to to maintain and to acknowledge and to recognize historical building sites and entities for the county or the city.
Hi, this is Commissioner Netherland. Why do you want to sit on the advisory board?
Oh, I've always worked, I've, I've been a contractor for years and I've worked on historical properties in the past. I think they're fun. And I live in a hundred year old house, over a hundred year old house.
All right, Steve. How will you help raise community awareness of Mason County's history and historic resources?
I'm sorry, what?
How will you help raise a community awareness for Mason County's history and historic resources?
By attending events, bringing acknowledgement and awareness to the community of the historical society and, and our function.
Steve, the board typically meets the second Thursday of each month at 2:00 PM. Will this be an issue for you?
No.
Steve, do you happen to have any conflicts of interest with the mission of the advisory board?
The only conflict that I have is that belongs to the Grange, which is a historical site here in Comas Valley.
All right, final question. Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Excellent. Okay, Steve. Well, hey, we appreciate your time. We have a couple more interviews this morning, but we'll be making a decision in short order. So appreciate your application.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Commissioners, is it just me, or it seems like all of us are a little bit muffled coming back through mine today, too? You guys, it sounds fine when you're in?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe it's just mine.
Okay, Mackenzie, next.
The other two should be attending via Zoom. I'm just waiting for them to log on.
Okay. And were they given like specific times to log in, or?
Yes, the next one is at 9:55. I was giving them about 10 minutes for the interview.
Okay. Okay, well, Commissioners, let's just pause until 9:55 and wait for our next applicant to log in.
Good.
Okay, it looks like we have Caleb on the line now. Caleb, are you able to hear us? And are you ready to get started? Caleb, can you hear us?
How about now? Can you hear me better?
Yeah.
All right. How are you doing?
Good. So Caleb, we'll go ahead and get started with your interview if you're ready.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. There's about six questions that Commissioners will ask in a round robin style. There's no right or wrong answers, just looking for your thoughts on each of the questions. We'll go ahead and get us started, then Commissioner Netherland and Trask will go. Our first question is, what do you see as the function of the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission?
The function? Well, I'd imagine to maybe help the community understand a little bit better the, the basic history. And also, I would like to think that kind of helped to create some commerce. And as well as, you know, obviously preserving things that are important to our, to our kids' future, frankly. And that's, that's how I see history. It's, it's for everybody else.
So Caleb, why do you want to sit on this advisory board?
I thought that I might have something to bring. I noticed that it came up at, while I was at work, I got the email. And it, it seemed like they were frankly, floundering a little bit. They didn't really have any folks there. And I thought, well, heck, I was a Lancer Air for years and I, and I love history. And I do structures now. I work for the Assessor's Office. And I thought maybe I had something that I could bring to the table that would be of use.
All right, great. Caleb, how will you help raise community awareness of Mason County's history and historic resources?
Well, I'd like to think that I could, you know, do, do my part in just participating with the historical societies and whatnot. But also, you know, what's left of Oyster Fest, you know? It's been moved around a lot, but sometimes that's an opportunity to, to share with the public. And maybe just get involved to see what we can do as a committee, as, as our group to try and raise some awareness. Because I wasn't aware of it and I've lived here my whole life. So, you know, maybe we could do a little bit better job, that's all. There were no fingers pointed here, just you know, do what we can and see if we can improve things.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Caleb, the board typically meets the second Thursday of each month at 2 o'clock. Will there, will this be an issue for you?
No, that's just fine.
Okay.
Caleb, do you see any conflict of interest that may come about with the mission of this advisory board?
I don't believe so. Barring that it, the meetings take place while I'm at work at the county, but I also have enough time put away that I've, I've spoken with my boss and you know, we created some time to where I'm, I'm using my vacation hours. So other than that, no, I, I don't have any issues with it whatsoever.
All right, great. Final question, Caleb, do you have any questions for us?
I, I don't. I, I'd be interested in meeting y'all one of these days without, you know, the video link in the way. But no, I, I think everything's going great. I, I hope everything continues to go great and, and yeah, that's, that's it. I'd really, I'd be pleased to sit on the board. Again, like I, like I had spoken to some of the other members, if I, if they feel that I can bring something that's of use, I, I don't have any want or need to just sit on a board for the sake of being there, you know, I, I definitely want to, want to be able to help. And I was pretty clear with the, with the rest of the, the committee as well. So I hope that that's taken into consideration.
Well, well, thank you very much, Caleb.
Thank you.
All we have.
Caleb, you're welcome to come down here anytime. We're just downstairs. Just come down.
Great. Yeah, I might have to come and do that. That'd be great. Thank you.
Awesome. Very good. Thanks, Caleb.
Great, thanks, you guys.
Okay, next we have Bill Jensen. Bill, are you able to hear us? Bill, are you able to hear us?
Oh, there we go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, absolutely. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, Bill, I think you might have just gotten a little bit of a preview of how the interview goes. Just, we have a few questions for you. Each commissioner will take turns asking those questions and no right or wrong answer, just provide the feedback that you think, that you think goes with the question. We'll go ahead and get started if you're ready.
All right.
Okay, what do you see as the function of the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission?
Well, I would say to identify historical, important historical sites or homes that need to be preserved and I think it's real important that those places be identified and not just disappear into history.
Good morning, Bill. Why do you want to sit on this advisory board?
Well, I was contacted by Jan, I'm a friend of Jan Goodpastor. And I think she saw me on the, the Antlers Hotel movie, which we did. Oh geez, probably eight, eight years ago, I'm guessing. I've been a volunteer at, with Liz at the Historical Society down there. And when Jan became president, I ran into her in Hoodsport and she said that she thought I might be a good candidate for that. And it does sound like something I'd, I'd be very, very interested in.
All right, Bill, thank you. And first, thank you for your service in the Air Force. Okay, Bill, how will you help raise community awareness of Mason County's history and historic resources?
I will say, I gave up my hearing aid a couple of months, a couple of months ago, and I probably shouldn't have, but it was probably, it was worse than the problem I had, just too too much sound. But anyway, could, could you please repeat that?
Absolutely. How will you help raise community awareness of Mason County's history and historic resources?
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how HPC works. But I have countless numbers of pictures that I've collected since I was probably 16 years old and just very interested in the whole history of the area. Mostly from, oh, I'd say Potlatch up to and including Lake Cushman.
Bill, this board typically meets the second Thursday of each month at 2:00 PM. Is this an issue for you?
No, I, when, when Jan, when Jan mentioned it to me, I did remind her that I, I'm retired and I travel a lot during the winter. So there are meetings I might miss. But if they're online, I guess I go to some remote places in the South Pacific and there, there may not be Wi-Fi. But I think I would be able to make most of the meetings.
Do you happen to have any conflict of interest with the mission of the, this advisory board?
Well, conflict of interest?
Yeah, any type of conflict that you may have with, no?
No, none whatsoever.
Hey, Bill, final question. Do you have any questions for us?
Well, not at this time. I do have a lot of questions on how things work and I do have a few places I'm interested in to find out if they've been nominated for to be in the HPC. So if, if I knew more about it, I think I, I would have questioned, and I, I think I will have questions if, if something, if, if I happen to get nominated.
Great. Well, I'm sure Michael McSimms, who's our staff member for this, would be happy to ask, answer any of the technical questions or process questions that you have. And maybe, maybe Michael can get in touch with you or vice versa and have that conversation.
Well, yeah, I, I would like to at least attend a meeting if it's open to the public. I was unable to attend the last one, although I forget who I spoke to. I said I would, I would be there and a family thing came up. We all went to Seafarers. It's a family tradition and I didn't miss that meeting, but I would love to, to come to the next one.
Great. Okay, Bill, that's all we have for you. If there's nothing else that you have for us, you're off the hot seat.
Okay, no, I'm glad we were able to meet. And how, how will the candidates be notified? Will Mackenzie email people or?
Correct, yeah. So we'll, we'll have a brief conversation about the applicants and then Mackenzie will be back in touch with everyone and let you know how the process will go forward from there.
Okay, I, I would like to say I'm, I retired from Boeing and customer service and Mackenzie has really been great. Really, really a top-notch employee. Just wanted to put that in there.
She is fantastic, but we, we appreciate you mentioning that.
I think we all agree with you.
Okay. Well, that's good. All right, no, I'm, I don't have any more questions, but really looking forward to even if I'm not nominated, so I don't know if those meetings are open to the public.
They are.
They are.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
All right, well, thanks for your time.
You bet. Thank you, Bill. Michael McSimms, are you able to hop on for just a brief second?
I am here. Hello.
Hi, Michael, thanks. So can you just remind us how many vacancies we're appointing for?
There's four, there's four open seats right now.
So we have three applicants and four open seats. Well, it seems like a pretty good day for our three applicants.
Yes.
Pretty good ratios. Okay, great. So Commissioners, any, any discussion on our interviews?
I found no issues with any of them. I think we should move all three forward.
Yeah, I think all three are, it's, it's great. Sorry, it's pretty exciting to see the, the applicants that we have. I think that they would be a huge asset to the, the advisory committee or board.
Yeah, I absolutely concur and support appointing all three of our applicants this morning to the commission. So we'll move forward with all three and then Mackenzie, if you can handle that and get it on the agenda for us.
Well, thank you very much, man. I'm looking forward to it.
Excellent. Congratulations, Bill. Thank you. Appreciate you stepping up.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right.
Bye.
Thank you.
All right. All good, Michael?
All good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, next item, moving on to support services. Mark, you ready to rock and roll?
We are ready. Mr. I see you going there. Are you listening to us, John?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, yes, sir. I wanted to talk about the decision for North Mason Soccer Club who wants to extend their schedule. We sat down and talked about it. If they could be off the field by October 14th, then there would be, and everything go smoothly, then there would be no issue or additional cost. If it goes beyond there, then it would be.
Then we make it so there's, that's, there is no option.
So John, how much of an extension is that?
Well, traditionally, if I'm not mistaken, their, their season ends sometime in September, but it's been, last year, they actually were extended into October, towards the end of October. So talking with Bud and the rest of the crew, if we can have them off by the 14th of October, which is a Friday, then they can go in without any additional costs and be able to keep the fields up. If they go beyond then, beyond that, then there will be additional supplies and labor that's required.
Well, since they usually would have their games on a weekend, why wouldn't we let them just do that weekend? As they're ending.
We can do that, sir. I was just hoping that if it was delayed and that, that's a good reason, then we can go on as long as we know they're off by close of business on Sunday. Then absolutely, it wouldn't be that much of an issue. I would just kind of give them a little bit of buffer. So in case they're not off by then. But Sunday would have to be the, the final conclusion date.
Well, I would think if we did allow it, that, that, that would be an option. They have to be off by Sunday if that's.
We can do that.
Okay, I would, I would be supportive of that, given staff's input, but no overtime, or I guess in soccer, no extra time.
Now they'll give you enough time to, to work on the, on the fields and make sure that they're ready for the next season. Sounds good.
Hey, all right. Appreciate all the work on that, John.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you, John. I know that that's been a, a lot of, of negotiation and talk and keeping our employees, you know, respected, respecting the work that they have to do, but also trying to make it available for our, our citizens. So good job, John. Jen, you want to talk to us about our July financials?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so beginning on page two of the July financials, we have for current expense, the revenue for all the departments. We are at $26,543,191 collected through July of this year. Compared to last year, we were at $25,958,641. And we're right in line. We're at 65% of our budgeted revenues received. Compared to last year, we were at 66%. So looking good comparatively there. Any comments, questions before we move on?
Like good news.
Yeah, and moving on to the, the treasures revenue detail. So this is in Department 260, the treasure collected through July, we have And compared, compared to last year, we were $18,4,773. And again, very comparable, 71% of our budget has been received through July of this year compared to 69% last year. We have received comparatively the same in property taxes and then about 400,000 more in sales tax. So, oh, and then our city-county assistance, we've received about 1.5 million more this year than, than last year. So that's where the big differences are.
Why, why is that? And if, because I was looking at that earlier, if that is the case, then we're actually a million, what, a million and a half difference in our revenue than we should be. So somewhere there's a shortfall if we're right where we should be.
Yeah, the shortfall is in the, the DNR Timber Trust. That one, that's the biggest one. There's 500,000 less received this year than last year. And as far as why we've received more in city-county assistance this year than last year, I would need to research that. So I will try to see if I can get to the bottom of that and I'll, I'll let you know, Commissioners.
Okay, please. And as I said, we're looking at a million and a half difference. So hopefully we can figure out, because even at 500,000, there's still a million that we're looking for.
Okay, any other questions or comments on that? Moving on to the expenditures. So we have expended in current expense through July, $22,845,958 this year compared to $21,669,206 last year. And again, looking very comparable, 52% of our budget is expended this year compared to 53% last year. So the benchmark is 58.3. So we're under that. So that looks pretty good. Moving on to the special fund, six-year recap. So this is page six of your of the online or of your packet. So we have received less in the community development revenues compared to last year. About 450,000. The detention and correction services, we've received about 105,000 less this year compared to last year. The property taxes all look relatively flat, which they should, since we didn't include a 1% property tax increase. The sales tax, again, that one is about 420,000 more this year than last year. The criminal justice tax entitlements, that is about 47,000 more this year than last year. Rural sales and use tax, that follows along with other sales tax and that's up about 36,000. The filings are, are down. So that is about a hun, all, close to 150,000 less this year compared to last year. Lodging tax is up and that's up about 53,000. And then for the first time in a long time, the REIT is actually down just slightly compared to last year. So it's down about 8,000 July of this year compared to July of last year. But you can see in the previous four years, it was, it was up. So I don't think it's really anything to be concerned about at this time. Questions or comments on any of that?
Yeah, on the community development revenues, you know, we're backwards quite a bit there. We need to please make sure and look and see if we have any jobs that are attached to money that's not coming in. So we can maybe have that discussion if it is. And am I the only one that sees it? But we seem to have an issue with our graphs. 400 and under the 20. Four hundred and, under the community service homeless, four hundred sixty-seven thousand is more than four hundred and fourteen, but on the graph it's less. One hundred and fifteen seems to be more than one twenty-three under the lodging tax.
So these graphs are attached to this information here. So it is grabbing the right information.
Okay, I'm seeing it. Sorry.
It's okay.
But on the other, if you don't mind, please look at that and tell us what we come up with if we're shy, because we tried to connect those jobs with revenues coming in. If there's some that are not, we need to look at that.
I know that Kel is going to be briefing, I believe, next week on, on where they're at with collections, and she can probably speak to that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to the sales tax by month. So we have collected five million, thirty-four thousand, five hundred thirty dollars so far through July, and that's really good, good news. We have budgeted only seven point two million this year. And if things continue, if we collect exactly what we did last year from August through December, we will have collected eight point eight two million. Our budget for next year, we're increasing the sales tax. Right now, we're looking at eight point four million is what the treasurer budgeted for twenty-twenty-three, so that and of course, that can be changed, but that's for the preliminary budget. So the sales tax is looking good, so it's nice to report good news there. Moving on to the six-year financial recap, current expense cash is at twenty-five million, and you can see all of our reserves here. I did not include the one that we're going to be adding, the five million dollar reserve for capital. That'll be in here after that resolution is adopted. So in August is when I'll add that in, as long as that resolution is adopted. The current expense recap, we're at sixty-five percent of our budgeted revenue at twenty-six million, five forty-three and fifty-two percent of our budgeted expenditures at twenty-two million, eight forty-five. And you can see the trend there for the previous five years.
Could you explain the general fund operating reserve, why it is less when we're spending more? I said, what, by percentage?
It does go by a percentage and so so yeah, we are at, I'll, I'll double check those numbers and make sure that that I had them correct, because yeah, I don't believe that twenty-one is higher than.
Yeah. Considering we're spending more, it should be.
Yeah, I'll double check that. I'll make a note. Unless might be higher because we're including, this year was the CARES money possibly. I'll, I'll look into that and and if there's an error, I'll let you know. For the cash balances for other funds through July, we're at forty-eight million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and one dollars for all of the special and other funds. And you can see that that's quite a bit higher compared to the previous five years. And of course, the American Rescue Plan Act money is included in there. But even taking that out, we're still quite a bit higher overall over the previous four years. So so that's looking good in most funds. The motor pool summary, I included a comparison of last year and this year. And on your handouts, there's an error in there. WSU, the assessor information for twenty-one was copied in there, but it wasn't included in the formulas. And so the grand totals are correct, and I've removed that error, so I just wanted to point that out. We are at, this year for motor pool, one point one four million expended compared to last year, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we're at seventy-five point eight-three percent of our total budget this year compared to sixty-nine point one percent of our total budget last year. And of course, that's higher than the benchmark, but the capital upfits typically are done in the first half of the year. So that's why that ratio is thrown off. So, and plus our fuel, of course, is very, very high. So any questions or comments on that?
The motor pool lease numbers, did we just take in more cars than we had expected that we would?
No, I think when we budget for the lease, we're going off of motor pool, the number that we get from Enterprise, which is a guess. And so the cars have been typically, in this year especially, a little more expensive than what we had originally planned on. So that's one of the factors there. And then part of it is that the capital lease, I budgeted part of it in, in there. And we're not really expending anything out of the capital lease.
So on, on that then, if it's coming in different than what we had originally agreed to and knew, is that going to come to us as a commission to look at?
I don't think it's been that much of a difference. I mean, really, it's the capital lease line is where the major difference is, just the difference in budgeting there. So if you add those two lines together, we're actually under budget there. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, so moving on to the, the revenue for the special funds, we're at thirty-three million, one hundred twenty-one thousand, eighty-seven dollars compared to last year, thirty-eight million, two hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. And the benchmark, we're fifty-eight point three. And we've taken in forty-one percent of our total budgeted revenue for all of the special funds compared to last year, we were at seventy-five percent. And then the expenditure side for the special and other funds, we're at twenty-six million, four hundred seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars compared to last year, twenty-four million, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. Were at thirty percent of our budgeted total this year expended compared to forty-one percent last year. So any questions or, or comments on, on any of that?
So the difference, even though it looks huge, the difference is the American Rescue? That we haven't put in yet, the six million?
I mean, I, I think it's more than that. I would have to take a deeper dive into, into the special and other funds. And I can do that and, and get back to you. It's difficult for me to say on a lot of these because they're managed by other departments. And so if there's anything specific that you want me to take a look at, I can, you know, reach out to the other departments. But yeah, the Fund One Fifty-Five, the American Rescue Plan Act, I don't think that's going to make that huge of a difference in, in the total, if that's what you're.
I'm looking at that, that we're shy five million for our benchmark, right?
Yeah, and that should be coming in, in the next, I, I would think the next few weeks. I was able to go in and apply for that money, the six point four million.
So when that comes in, though, that puts us above the benchmark and we're setting good a revenue in.
Yeah, that'll definitely help the, the ratio there. Yeah, I can take a, a deeper dive. I mean, oh, this is a, a big one, the scope flood zone, ten million. And they have nothing. So that's a bigger factor than the, the American Rescue Plan Act. But yeah, those two together, maybe a couple of others. Oh, the Belfair wastewater, that one's a big factor in there as well. The eleven million budgeted, but only a million expended. I mean, received, I'm sorry. And on the expenditure sheet, I just wanted to point out to you, I'd forgotten to change the benchmark there. It should be fifty-eight point three percent and the sheet say fifty, so I've, I've updated that. So any other questions or comments, commissioners?
Nope. Great job.
Me. Just want to thank you, but I always keep, I take these out of my book each time and keep them. I very much appreciate all the work you put into these and what it does for us to give us that information at our fingertips when we need it.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I'll, I'll take a look again at the motor pool leases and the couple other things that you pointed out and see, see what the difference is. But again, I don't think that the leases are any, you know, huge issue there. I think it was more of the the budget lines.
I guess I'm just saying, if it does turn out to be something like that, that, please make sure it gets shared with us, especially if we're adjusting contracts or amounts in the long term. So we know what we're looking at to keep it compartmentalized for the future.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, great. Next up, commissioner discussion. I did have one item on there. We can dive into that or if there are any other items for commissioner discussion.
No.
My, my issue is just a, a tip cap. We, we currently have no tip cap.
We're out there soliciting members.
Yeah, well, I, she explained to us the last time that she already had. She had done that and she got no response. And then
After the press release?
Yeah, but she had, she had done it before that too, though. Just keeping that in mind. So, well, we're still going to come up shy even with all of them.
Sounds like we need to step up our game and start talking to people.
Okay, great. Let's see. So the one thing I wanted to bring forward, commissioners, this is a National Association of Counties effort. We're a little bit ahead of the curve here. This is for November for Veterans Day, but Operation Green Light, the National Association is asking for county administration buildings and courthouses to be lit green for, in recognition of veterans from November seventh to the thirteenth. And just, it's a, it's an opportunity to, to let veterans know that they're seen, appreciated and supported in our communities. And it's actually something that originated in New York State. So thanks to our counterparts over in New York for this. But I wanted to see if there was interest in our community participating in Operation Green Light and recognizing veterans in November.
Thank you for bringing it forward, because yes.
I think that's awesome. Do you know, has the city been reached out to also?
I'm not sure. I mean, we can definitely, I can, I can check with Mayor Nisco and, and Manager Knighton and, and see if they'd be willing to participate. I don't think there'd be any issue, but this is something that came to us through our counties association. And I would imagine cities are doing similar things. So we can time it up with them if they're interested. I think that would, that'd be fantastic. So.
That'd be great.
There is a, there is a proclamation that goes along with it. And so if, if you're comfortable with it, I'll work with Diana McKenzie and get that on at the appropriate time and then work with Mark and Kelly about how we would light our facility.
Please do. And if we wanted to go over the top on how we light facilities, I'd still be extremely excited about that. I think it's a, a small investment for such a great and worthy.
Yes, absolutely. Agreed. Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, Loretta, are you ready?
Good morning.
Morning.
Oh, sorry, get some video going here. All right, commissioners, this morning, our briefing items are largely prep for getting ready for twenty-twenty-three and rounding up our materials and our professional services. And with that, I'll kick it over to Mike to talk about a request to contract for materials and services on our operations side.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Yeah, we're looking to advertise an award for striping and chip rock oil and chip rock itself and some culverts for next year. So we'd like to have the board approve that we can set opening dates and award contracts for these items.
Sounds good to me.
Yep, me too.
I'm here.
Thank you. Next is we have on call, on call consulting services for materials testing and engineering construction services. So we'd like to get with the, the MRSC consultant application. That was timely. For these services, we'd like to sign agreements with the consultants not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars each.
No issue with me, commissioners?
Good.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Thank you.
They're ready?
Sure. The last item is amending. So we've got a series of contracts that are in place at this time. And what we are requesting from the commission is to either, well, these are all a request to extend the contracts. And in some cases, we are also requesting additional funds. So we have a current contract with Exaltech to complete some work for us on fish barrier projects. And that is a simple extension with no request for an increase in contract amount. We have our existing contract with Gibson Olson for connecting up to the City of Shelton Services here for the Public Works Facility. And the request there would be for an additional fifteen thousand dollars, and that's for construction management services during the extension of the, the services. And then we have an H and H analysis, hydraulic and hydrologic analysis for the Lower Uncle John's project, and that's with Parametrics. And that also, in addition to the, the, the contract extension, we're requesting additional funds here in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. We are requesting to continue our contract with Parametrics for the post-closure for the Mason County landfill at Yills Hill. And not to get everyone excited, this is not in reference to the, the transfer station operations, but this is the old landfill itself. And then last of all, we are requesting to extend our contract with correct equipment for the grinder pump maintenance. And again, just a time extension, no increase in the contract amount requested. Are there any questions, commissioners, about these contracts and, and what we are asking?
No questions for me, and I'm supportive of extending.
Yeah, no questions for me, and I'm, I supported it.
Okay, great. And thank you to Kelly for putting these all on one lovely briefing as opposed to four separate ones. Hopefully that works for commission as well.
I like it.
We welcome efficiency.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, other than that, discussion, Commissioner. Okay, other than that, discussion, Commissioner Netherton, I heard you bring up tip cap. We, the next tip cap meeting is scheduled for, let's see, September. Geez, it's hard to imagine September already, but typically they meet the second Wednesday, so September fourteenth. And we've got action agendas for the commission either August thirtieth or September thirteenth, the day before tip cap. So we'll, we'll continue to do our part to see if we've got some new membership applications. But as Commissioner Netherton mentioned, we do not have any to date, any additional new membership. Although we've certainly been putting it out there for folks that express interest in transportation issues. And commissioners, I know you've been doing the same. So we'll keep you posted and we will be sure to brief on the twenty second about the current status. And I would appreciate any direction or thoughts you may have about action. Personally, just so we can get the, the tip cappers some certainty, I would hope to try and do appointments on the thirtieth. So they've got some time to review materials and be prepared for their next meeting.
And they were able to have one this time, right? Because they were, they were no longer a committee, so they went home.
Well, they did, although commissioner, I did speak with the chair the Monday prior and certainly said that we would support the meeting, that they would not be able to take official action. But if they wish to meet and discuss the tip that Mike had presented the month before, we could certainly have those discussions. They, they just could not take action. But the group, my understanding, I was not at the meeting, but it was my understanding that the, the committee decided at the meeting to, to not meet. And Mike, feel free to jump in if I've got anything squirrely there.
You got it.
Okay, Loretta, can you forward me the list of applicants that we do have to review?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, forward to more discussion.
Okay. All right. And then other than that, thank you, commissioners, for, we took a tour to take a look at projects primarily up at the, on North Shore, because that's where all the fun action's been happening lately. And so that's, it's always nice to see our crew doing outstanding work and having a good time and being professional. And holy moly, we've, we've, we've got a lot accomplished this summer. And looking forward to, we're, we're, we're making every minute of our construction season. And thanks to Mike, our supervisors, Jeremy, obviously the crew, most especially, for doing such great work. It's really fun to see.
Yeah, I just, I'll just, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Trask, sorry.
That's okay. I was just gonna thank you both for taking me in a long and showing me the, the works in project in progress and the ones that have been completed too, and the ones that we're looking at in the future. I especially like the turtles.
Turtles?
No, I really, the, the crew is amazing. All the, the tools that we have, the, the talent that we have, the, the, the manless or personless flagging systems that we have now, I think really protects our people and, and work very efficiently. So really appreciated the, the ride along and the, the conversations and, and the education too. You guys are awesome.
Yeah, thank you for taking the time.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, just the North Mason Voice, I attended the meeting up there on Thursday. And so it was great to hear firsthand from community members about their observations and questions and concerns around traffic and growth within the Belfair UGA. And definitely very appreciative of our partners from DOT for attending and being able to respond professionally and provide information as well. And thanks to Kel, I definitely appreciated her there as well. So that was a, a good meeting and certainly points out the interest and need to have continued conversations with our, our community around growth.
Absolutely. I thought it was a great meeting.
Excellent.
And I guess that is about it on my end, commissioners.
Okay, commissioners, anything else for Loretta or Mark or Mike?
Yeah, I have a few things. One, the voice meeting was good. We as commissioners, though, we need to be a little more careful and make sure that we notice our meetings. I'm a member of the group, and when we got there, we had two commissioners that remained silent because I didn't want to be taking testimony because we had community staff there. So it lays on all of us to make sure that I, myself, I announce that meeting while I'm going to be there to, to make sure that we don't have any crossups that way. I need to give a special shout out. I don't know if the commissioners had heard, but we came this close again to get into the water with a spill in Lakeland Village. And that young man, please help me with his name.
There were several involved.
The, the young man with red hair thought outside the box and actually did like a front loading on it and got it bypassed. And literally only about five gallons came out of the manhole that they were, and they all came in, in a swarm. And none of the water, none of this stuff got to the lake this time. And wow, were they on it. I was so impressed and I, I just was so thankful. And the way they were all involved, it was, it was pretty cool. If there's a possibility for them to get a green star, I would very much appreciate it. With that, there was different conversations and I'd love for the commission to consider or have staff just look into the options. Providing a few things, there was a while back, we had an issue when we didn't have a pump truck that had the right material. It may be a low end thing to get secondary, so I'd love to see our staff at least look at it, look at a crane truck for our services out there. And another big one is a bypass pump. But this, that would be more for the long range because it has to be planned in to be able to put things on one side and the other pieces that it could connect to. But I'd just like to have us look at that stuff for the long range and perhaps have Mike do his magic that he does for saving money. I'm looking for things that, on the low end, because we wouldn't need them all the time. It's just having them when we do need them would be a very big tool. But again, a very, very big thank you from myself and my community, because it was up and above regular duty, the way they handled it. It was pretty impressive. I brought him food and that wasn't enough, guarantee you. That's all I have.
Great. Well, it's really good to hear, Commissioner. Appreciate your, you sharing that with us. Okay, Commissioner Trask, anything for Loretta or Mike?
No.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
All right, thank you, commissioners.
All right, commissioners, so we have, the only thing that we have left on here is an eleven AM executive session. So I'll just ask that we pause, we'll come back at eleven and make the announcement and then go into executive session.
We meet in the other room?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.